It's just something.
I just, he told me about it. I just felt that you guys should know about it.
I can just see them fighting.
It gets cold here.
Yeah.
The state was taking some kind of action.
When was the last time you cracked? So it looks like you have fun last year.
That's how it is around here.
It would be if the state was taking act, some kind of action, then we'd have that on the agenda.
Charlie was telling me, time two years ago, he was driving in.
Just a minute. I'll even.
What's up Charlie?
Talk to him.
There's no transfer scrapbook down there.
We didn't take those signs down.
Right. All the fun we have as family, huh?
I don't know what difference it makes if we did or not. It doesn't matter.
No, they just got to go back up.
Oh, these are the policies things?
No, no, that is for Alice, so I have no idea what she was gonna do.
Yeah.
I think that's our resume.
Yeah. What is that?
Resume advocate for the road superintendent.
Oh, do we have that today?
Um, I think we have to decide.
Okay.
I think we have to decide when and who we're interviewing.
Do we have an update on that?
No, that's, that's something I think we have to decide. Well, it's probably HR update.
Yeah, I think it's in there.
Oh, okay.
I have no idea.
Oh, we put it on HR update.
So do we want to add something to the policy down on that, or just, ah, to the agenda, or just?
Well, we can have these in the, in the HR.
HR's gonna put, I mean, this will be on the HR.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Then we can decide what we want to do.
Okay. We have this to add to the agenda, these, um, weed board, weed board.
This one's Shelby's, that one's Murray, that one's Grandboll's, that one's mine.
I even have questions on that. Okay, nine o'clock, we'll call a meeting in order. Okay, approval of the agenda. I've got, uh, an item to add under other business, weed board applications. I've got two of them here. Anybody else have anything?
Uh, we'll put under, uh, HR update, we'll discuss the resumes.
And that would be road superintendent resumes?
Yes.
And then, um, can we put just a library board update on other business?
Library. Oh, yeah, you've been having a question on that one. I'll have to ask you. Any other items you want to add to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
I will move to approve as amended.
Jamie, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Approval of amendments.
I'll move to approve the amendments as presented.
Liza, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Review and approve vouchers.
I don't have to. Don't have to have to do.
We're going to go through all the bills. Which would take us approximately a half hour. If you want, you can do whatever until then. Did I cover myself, Dan? You know I'm gonna forget, so if you remember, I'm gonna ask about that.
Okay. No, we still have one opening. We still have one opening. Cause we, we had.
You hers?
Yes.
Okay.
But, yeah, we can talk about that.
Yeah. Is that the rest I got? Jack and Carol, so, so sweet.
Carmen?
Yes.
This very first one, that's a prepaid. Whose signature is this for? Department headed to where the county sheriff's office?
Oh. It's gonna be. I'm gonna have to ask.
Yeah, that's a new, that's a new scribble.
Yep. Very much so.
Nope, that's not, that's not anybody's over there that I.
So Dan, did you throw an X at them? Or a stick? So if Dan's ever coming up here with a hatchet, in front is the best place.
Yep. Stay right in front and center. Don't dodge, duck, or dive.
Or not. Five days of dodgeball. Dodge, duck, dive, something else in dodge.
Yep. I just, I think it goes right back to dodge. There you go.
Yeah.
It's a good goal, Dan.
Some of those were in their trial recently.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Now it makes sense.
Several times, and that's a miss. Paper's.
Awesome. Not sure why this is here in the final, but it is.
Get everybody excited. Oh, it's almost over.
Right? That's why I'm like, wait a minute, why am I looking at this one already?
Carmen, was the city of Beulah gonna fix this so it stops coming to Mercer County 911?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Um, actually, we got a call in, and then, uh, Darcy over there is working, in work with the city to get it.
Okay.
So it's for the county now.
I thought we did that last month.
No, should be for the county.
It's coming out in the road department, yeah, but it's still just coming to 911, and I thought we did that last month, so.
Why let her know about it? Well, I let her know about it last month, and she's gonna give us the details, and I wanted to make sure. We still need that account in case.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Right. But I just wanted to reflect the proper one that's coming out. Did Gwen go to some type of training?
Yes. Yes, we went to the conference.
Okay.
Especially the progress of the conference.
Hmm, okay.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
I wanna see this thing.
You go check this thing in action.
Let's see what it is.
It's a lot. Hey Carmen?
Hmm.
This one for the paper folder, you know, it has treasurer here and stuff, but then you signed off on it, shouldn't that be signed by Dawn then?
Okay, what is it?
The paper folder.
For the treasurer?
And it says to the treasurer, you know, it's got Dawn and stuff, but then you signed on this one, shouldn't Dawn have signed on this one?
Unless we took it on, we're doing it now. I also wanna see this paper folder.
Oh.
Right.
They are amazing.
Like, I wanna see this thing.
The person she's got is extremely old, but they are amazing. I would say I signed it because of the account.
That doesn't make any sense.
Yep. Tell me. Everybody gets to use.
Cause everybody uses it?
Yep.
Gotcha.
I'm still gonna go see this paper folder.
I wanna see it in action.
They're pretty slick, though. I mean, if you got thousands of stuff to stuff, yeah.
Right? Which we do.
Yeah, right, right.
They fold.
Well, but I mean, folding is a, yeah, folding is a triple part of the stuff.
So it's not a folder, it's like.
No, it's like a machine that goes.
Older.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
At first, when you showed it to me, I'm like.
Like, what do we, what do we store in this thing?
No, it's, it's, uh. Does the triple fold and.
Oh, well, okay, I'm gonna go check that thing out then.
Yeah. Like, if you're in a, uh, billing company, and you send out thousands of statements every month.
Like the treasurer's office does with land soon?
Yeah. And that was then, it's just like.
Not quite.
Someday, Dan.
Someday when space and matter doesn't matter. Or if you got money like J K does. But then you just snap your fingers, and people magically do what you wanted.
Which is why, excuse me, if there is not a tax.
It's on the description, they should put tri folder.
That would, I mean, I would have, yeah.
Yeah. I just love our language.
I was thinking like a folder for.
Like the sentiment, a folder, kinda look at, bang, and be like, wow.
How many kisser?
That's why I was questioning the amount so much, like, that is, that is a, is one fancy folder.
Solid folder. Better be bulletproof.
I was gonna say bomb proof.
Fireproof.
Do you mind?
There was a forest fire.
I tried to call her a few times. Well, twice, so that's not a few.
Oh, it's cold. Didn't we use the T S? Oh.
They're kinda lucky, man. When the system gives you lemon, dot, dot, dot.
Never gonna know, Travis, you're bad.
Punt, you're, uh.
Oh, is this one?
We had nine, nine shifts that we did.
Why doesn't it come in separately?
I suppose he was submitted it. It should've went through, well, his department. So he liked, he was a few.
Okay.
Why did they do it, what, the, um, treasury department, I mean, Cody and Edo's, we did it separately or whatever.
Right, McLean County did it.
He did like nine shifts through the, cover for overtime for vacation and.
There's a couple more coming here.
Yeah.
I almost gotta say, it made it past Jamie and Liza, why do I even question them?
Well, we did talk about it, we're down here.
Yeah, we, we discussed it down here.
Then we're good.
Cause I'm assuming they have enough on their budget anyway, because they don't have a full-time deputy on, they're missing a full-time deputy right now, correct?
Which is where.
Yeah, with.
Coverage for vacations is slim.
Okay.
Right.
We had the fair, and we had everything else, and it was.
There's a threshold to an overtime is deeper than having a full time, but then you get to that, you burn everybody out, so there's a final.
That's where we're at.
Yep, I'd say I think that's.
That's where we're at.
That's where we're at.
So it's been numerous months now, so.
And it's kinda the same group that's been coming over, so they are getting.
They kinda know.
Yeah.
They know our rules now.
Well, just even staff, you know, dispatch staff and stuff.
He was really busy on Friday, I heard him like constantly. Does it turn me off to hear the number at first? What? Huh?
And some of the others are doing the most time. Having a cop on it, but I said you said the wrong. No, I didn't. It's hard to change up.
I'm just saying, just let me know.
Carmen? We got some plum testing, say, or it's crazy, who's the house owner?
See, now that's where you're gonna need to ask Alice. They come through, I forward them to her, but these, I've seen their own new employment.
Say, and we hired those temporarily.
Right. Okay, then that would've been his.
This one, this, this one was for the road department, and he would've had to have one to come back as a ten, and she started new in dispatch today.
The county, the county.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Jean.
You would think they're relevant.
Yeah.
Right, or not?
What? That's just the first time I've seen that, the county nineteen railroad tracks, we get charged less than three hundred bucks.
County nineteen railroad tracks.
I have a question. I forgot to mention this when we started.
That's weird.
That must be like in the cities, pay for all the ones that go through town?
It's cool. Well, not one on nineteen. It's dark down that corner, that's where it's probably shop there.
Right. Maybe it's, uh, maybe it's not, uh.
No, it's, there's a light, there's like a light there, like there is along highway two hundred for those intersections.
Because that's in county, not in city, that's why it's not. Nothing's for free.
I didn't see it on the other one, just on that one, did the amount was like, it was like table. I also wonder if we had all of our Verizon, like on one, like business account. I don't know if I can do that with. I don't know.
That's what I do want to check into, yeah.
Cause you would think you could. What are you guys talking about?
Like the Verizon bill, I've always questioned if we.
We're checking on that.
Go to like a business account and have everybody under one.
Right.
Thing versus separate.
And Liza had mentioned that before, and I have, we're just checking on that.
We were looking at it like for personal side, that's what made me think of it when they keep coming through separately. I'm like, I feel like you could probably have it all under one.
And you know.
But maybe we can't.
Under personal, I think it's up to nine.
But like a business account, I'm saying.
Right.
Definitely worth checking into, yes.
I.
I think he has the, I think it's the wrong box.
Yeah, yep.
Cause what do we do with those, uh, with those lines, uh, when an employee is no longer with the county and we haven't filled that position? We could end up with like two, say phones.
Yeah.
That are just laying around that we're paying for.
Correct.
I understand that, you know, when you fill the position, you're gonna need a phone for them, but. Yeah.
Do we do a summer fill, is that what they do, okay, no?
I believe it is.
I had one up in the city that's.
No, not one.
It's courthouse.
Nobody submitted anything?
I didn't see anything, so I'm, yes, I didn't.
I think Ken just emailed.
It takes all bite.
But a summer fill is what that is.
While there. Here at the courthouse, I think it gets, we see those come through almost monthly.
Hot water?
Hot water, I think it's.
Hey, you got a kitchen and stuff, we gotta have legal.
Uh, no, that's, I'm gonna say, we have a contract rights for that, right? That's not open. Is it open market or contract?
It's contract, that's what I thought, yeah.
So it doesn't matter, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter when you fill, but. We probably have a contract for keeping them full, you know what I mean? Yeah. So like if they're running around doing something and then they got small things, then they can top it off and go back empty.
Can we get a list of who all has phones?
I'll get you a list.
Um, you gave me some, but I want.
It was just I gave.
You think that's missing some?
I'd like to see everybody that has a.
Wow.
Everybody that's a cell phone in the county.
Yep.
Okay. So if I did it, do you want me to just email it out to everybody? Then all of you have it?
Cause I, yeah, I know Jean gave me one, I have an email of it.
That was a while ago too.
Right, and he wasn't sure if all the people were on it or not.
There's just been changes again. Okay. Email it out.
This is what I currently have.
Right.
This was about fifteen hundred dollars.
That's wrong or right, even close. Well, I've gotten a couple lists, Terry gave me one, uh, Rachel gave me one, you gave me one. And so I kind of put them all together and that's what I came up with. Actually found, Dr. Knowles looking for in my file. That's rare, that thing is a mess.
That didn't even take you a minute, Jean.
Oh, that's pretty good, isn't it?
Yeah.
There, that's it.
I was, uh, reading a story about Albert Einstein. And he said, um, somebody asked him what his phone number was, and he goes, no idea. He's like, I don't waste time trying to remember things that I can look up within two minutes. He's like, it's, it's, it's not worth, um, trying to memorize things like that.
That kind of wipes all everything in my head.
But then they, uh, the, it goes on further, um, where he was on the train and the conductor came by and asked for his ticket. And he was like, look, and he's like, oh, Mr. Einstein, I'm sure you paid, it's not a big deal, whatever, you know. I, I don't need to see your ticket. And he walks down a few more people and he turns back and he sees Albert Einstein like looking under his seat and stuff. He's like, sir, sir, I'm sure you bought your ticket and everything like that. And he goes, yeah, I'm sure I did, but I don't know where I'm getting off, and that's why I gotta find my ticket.
So, can we write on this?
Jean.
Getting there.
Can we write on this?
What?
Can we write on this?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So that goes to the thing where he didn't care to memorize it or remember it because he could look it up. But when he can't find his ticket.
And find it.
He's like, I don't know where I'm getting off at. You just start calling people?
And you pay for this one?
Maybe, no. Yeah.
Do a mass text. What's the most you can put in a group text?
I don't know.
Is there a limit?
I don't know. I guess I've never really one, like tested set limits. I put fifteen in before, so I know you can do at least fifteen.
As I say, I think I have one that's about that, it's a family one that's obnoxious.
Right, and you're just like, oh, stop.
The most inconvenient time for your phone to be leaving, which is you're on a court call.
We were at country fest Saturday night in my osco, in a group text about the drop thing.
Kay, can I have a motion to approve the bills?
I make a motion to approve the bills as per.
I have a, I have a second.
Jamie, I'll second.
Any further discussion, hearing nun Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Clining and.
Um, I'm just gonna give an update on this, um, Jen wasn't gonna come in, but, um.
And I have this in there?
Yep, that's fine, um, basically, I'm trying to get the Water Resource Board to have a meeting, um, to discuss this based on the last meeting that we talked about it. They haven't had one together, and I've also told them that they haven't turned their budget in yet to Carmen, so they need to do one soon. So, um, with this, um, one of the comments that was made was the, um, approach permits. Um, they have submitted those and they have been approved by the road department, um, so they got those in place. And then I would like to put this on our special meeting agenda if the Water Resource Board has a meeting and just put it in with Jen's time on Monday.
Okay, um, does it, does it need to be like?
Well, I mean.
Till August seventh? Because what we're having is a budget here.
Right, but it's a special, it's not a hearing, is it? It's a special meeting, but.
I don't know. Special budget meeting, it says.
I just kind of feel like it could personally wait till August seventh, but so, you know, it's up to you guys.
I was just wondering if we could add it in Jen's spots on, um, next Monday, but, I mean.
On this zoning case.
On this zoning case.
What did you say that they did get done, Travis?
Approach permits.
Approach permits. Yep, cause that was one of the comments, um, and that they submitted those, but.
I haven't talked to Jen about this, but is there anything with the sewer that needs to be discussed also? Because of the amount of spots.
Usage.
Yeah, it, um, it goes to Western Plains Health and then it also gets, it also goes to the state.
Okay.
But generally the state on these, when they're onsite septic systems. The health district, regardless of where you're at, um, goes through them and then, um, jointly the state goes through them and generally the state. If, if the health district's fine with it, the state's usually fine with it, so. And, and the, and the reason they're, they wanna get going on construction and stuff like that, that's kind of why there's the push behind it, but.
I just, I actually feel like I wait till August seventh, but whatever you guys want to do.
And that's if the Water Resource Board meets in the next.
I think, I don't know, I haven't looked through here, but since it's on the agenda and you brought it up. I think there's concerns of mine, and I haven't read through this all, are like, um, turning lanes off that fifty-eighth Avenue Northwest. That is a very narrow road and that has no shoulders, and we're talking about a lot of camper sites here. So my concern is I would like to require, um, uh, like an exit lane, um, off of fifty-eighth Avenue. Because if you're gonna be trying to make a right turn into these and at the same time a camper's coming out, you're gonna be blocking traffic coming up from the south big time. So I think we're gonna have to require some turning lanes put in there. Also, I, you brought up.
County do that, or does that need to go through V O T?
Well, this is a county.
County roads, so it can go through us.
Because they're, we can require them to put it in, um, as part of their application. Also, I don't know, I'm, and I'm trying to scan this real quick through here, what about, uh, you probably touched on it there, um, uh, sewage disposal. They have a sewage disposal site?
They're gonna have multiple ones.
Okay.
Um, cause they're allowed through the health district, up to twenty sites on, on one system, so they'll have, um, like five or six systems.
So we're gonna, we're, we're gonna have to have that in their application, that that's been, and what, what they're doing. Um, what about storm shelters? Uh, this is getting to be a big thing, is, uh, we're getting so many of these, um, camp spots. And having a storm shelter available. Something that, um, commission may consider as a, is, uh, storm shelters. Uh, playground, is there a playground in the drawing?
Everything you're mentioning is not in our codes or our requirements, um, which is part of the reason for the last couple of years I've asked us to put money in the budget to update our codes. But I don't know, this would probably be a Todd question, is, are these, um, things that, you know, we can require even if it's a permitted use in existing?
That's the whole thing is.
Cause it's not a conditional use, it's a permitted use.
We're looking for a conditional use permit and, um, and you're exactly right, our, our code is pretty blank. So the only way that this, at this, on this level, that this county itself can be protected at all is through the, uh, providing the conditions that we, we think we need on there. And you're exactly right too, and we need a budget for, you know, updating our books and our codes, you know. And, but I just, I mean, we're in a catch twenty-two at this one, we need to get it done, we haven't got it done. So I mean, the only way we can protect our county is by putting these conditions on the way I see it.
And that's what I'm, I mean, I can visit with Todd and see if we can add those conditions onto this permit, but going forward, I would, I, it's not that I'm. Taking that, just this park, it's any additional park, I would wanna see that. Any, anyone wants to build a RV park, I'm gonna, you know, we need turning lanes, we need, um, storm shelters, playgrounds, sewage. We need all that taken care of and not just go out there and build a hundred and fifty unit, uh, RV park. And now how the camper's gonna go and get in there, oh, wow, the county's gotta build a road. No, 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 we gotta get that taken care of upfront. So, and I'm saying with sewage, we gotta meet, uh, make sure they meet state, uh, requirements. And that, that one I don't even know if, I, I think that'd be a state thing, I don't even know if we could allow a hundred and fifty unit, uh, RV park without proper sewage, um, facilities. And I do know, um, commissioners have brought up the storm shelter thing, and that's been brought up with these campground.
Well, and storm shelters are being looked at at from like EM and LEPC side. That's been our topic because of after last year's storm and the fact that it's getting busier at both lake sites. So.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I would necessarily say that the RV park has to put in a storm shelter.
I would say they had, need to have a location for it to be put in.
Or some, yeah.
Something like that, you know? Cause if we're gonna put in for the other ones, I don't think it's fair that we make this one put it in. But I think that there should be a designated area where we know it's gonna go. Because we need it for the safety of our community members who go up there.
I know we, retroactive, we can't, but I'm, even from this day forward, and we haven't, um, okayed this permit yet. So I think that's, we need to get those things in place, even, even if we can do it as a condition of this, or even if we put it in as part of our, uh, ordinance.
I think we have to ask Todd first to see if that's something that we can even require, since this is, they're going off of what we have currently in place. I don't know if we can actually re- require such things if they're going off of what we current, we definitely need to update.
The sewer stuff, the water stuff is already, that's a thing.
Right, so I think we need to discuss with Todd first.
I'll talk with Todd.
Okay.
And you were just giving us an update, right?
I was giving you an update because the Water Resource Board hasn't met. So, Ed, would it, would it still be worth discussing this on Monday if we have answers, or?
I still personally feel like I'll wait till August seventh.
Not Monday already, no, I would say not Monday yet. Probably the next, when's the next commission meeting?
August seventh.
Day seventeen, August seventh.
Send one of those, or we have like a three week gap.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I...
I feel since we have it as a special budget meeting, unless you call a second special meeting, but I think it could be July seventh. You guys, that's why I got it on the agenda, so you guys can discuss how you want this meeting. When it's just a special meeting, then we can put him on at the end with her budget, you know what I mean? It's up to you guys, that's why I put it on.
To me, it doesn't have anything to do with her budget.
I mean, are we gonna be, if we, we have more questions, we won't approve it if we, I mean, you're looking at Monday, then you'd want an approval, that, that's what...
Well, I mean, the other thing is, is like, if you're gonna make a whole bunch of conditions that aren't in our codes and stuff like that, I mean, it would be nice to be able to address those at the next meeting. You know, if that gives us three weeks to address all those at the next meeting, but if we wait three weeks and then you come to us and say you want twelve more additional things and then it delays it another meeting and then it delays us another meeting and, um...
I understand that, and that's kind of why I brought that up now. I, instead of waiting and till you're looking for approval, then I for one throw this all out here. What I would consider conditions, but let me, let me talk with Todd, see what he's got to say. Uh, Monday's meeting. We're, uh, you, you wanted to add it to the Monday meeting?
Yeah, because I was just, I mean, I know we're talking about budget, but it's a special meeting, so if we add it before the meeting, but if we can't make any additions to the agenda at the meeting, they have to be made before. That's the, why I'm asking today.
Oh, well, we can add it to the meeting on Monday, but I'm gonna just caution and say I don't know if we'll be ready to make a decision, so if we can add it to the meeting, to that meeting...
Well, if there are some more conditions, you would know some of it. That helps you in some of the respect, don't you? But I'm saying that totally...
I don't know why I couldn't get a hold of Todd.
Can I put it as a P and Z update right after the talks?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I guess you can call P and Z here. Yeah, if it's on the agenda, at least we can talk about it.
Can we just put it under?
Other?
Other business?
Yes.
Uh, under, under other, and that way we could fit it in wherever, unless you need a particular time?
Well, I mean, I think Jen would like to be here, um, and she's at three, but I mean...
She's at three?
Yeah, she's at the end.
Oh, then we just wait till the end.
But you can still put it on as other, so if we are ahead or whatever and she's here. Because, I mean, she's gonna want to know what we're thinking for...
Okay.
Not just this one, but future ones if, you know, that's, that's an important thing for...
Okay.
Line used to be a part of.
All right. Uh, are we good with that then for now?
Yeah, we're not making any...
Want to give us? Okay.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna tell you where we're at and...
Okay.
Then I'm trying to get the Water Resource Board to meet and see if there's any things they want to add.
Okay. Highway Department, Rough Rider Electric Co., next item on the agenda, Rough Rider Electric Co-op Utility Permit seventeen sixty-three.
According to a visit with Elroy on the way over, yeah, uh, this morning, and, uh, they looked at all this and they approved it, so I would make a motion to accept, uh, this op- application for, for permit for Rough Rider Electric.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Jamie.
That was Jamie. Was, uh... Anything particular about this? It's just a boring road?
Just a boring road.
Okay.
Yeah, look on the back.
All right.
And then, Rick, I'll have him sign a copy.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing nun Rick.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Boy, it's just, we're, we're moving right along. Um, okay, we can jump to other. Uh, June sheriff's fees for forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents, I have a motion to approve.
Also moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing nun Rick.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Jean, aye. June recorder fee, six thousand, four hundred, six thousand, forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Jamie?
Liza, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing nun Jamie.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Uh, approve Western Plains Health usage of Mercer County opioid funds of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
I'll move to approve the Western Plains Public Health usage.
Second?
Liza, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing nun Jamie.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. July twenty-fifth at ten fifteen, the Daco County, oh, that's just a reminder.
Right, and then you've got the information, you've got places to name, and I don't know, do you want us to have something here?
I suppose we should have.
Yeah, I won't be here, just so everyone knows.
Cookies and coffee.
Cookies and coffee.
We should do something, you know, a little bit. I think we should do something a little bit.
But this is kind of our notice that they're coming. We're not gonna be doing any county business, but we'll probably have a quorum here, so...
Right, because Dan knows.
It's already been, and you know something.
And I know, um...
Public knows.
Put it on the web, second, just...
And then I sent it out to all the department heads, because they also are invited, they want to visit with everybody.
Yep.
Okay, I've got weed board applications now. It's kind of a, what do I have? I was at the weed board meeting and I got these two people to say they would run again.
You voluntold them or what?
Yeah, railroaded them. I said, put your name on these darn, dang forms. Um, but I'm hoping that we're not out of order, not meeting order, but by getting these applications, did this get advertised at all? Do we have to advertise it at all?
I'd say we probably... I had no idea they had these.
I think you have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can approve these then now at this meeting?
Right.
But we can at the next meeting then.
I think it has to run for two weeks.
We got three weeks till the next regular meeting, so it should be fun.
Advertise.
If you give me those applications, will they keep them together?
Yep.
Get out of town today?
So effectively, um, they're on the weed board, but technically they aren't. It's kind of a confusing thing with them.
But you're saying there's two vacancies now?
Yes, though two vacancies is actually those two positions.
Two expired terms, yeah.
Yes, so they expired, so they're kind of vacant, but they're still assuming the duties for now, so they haven't get a reorganization, because Jamie is the president, they're waiting for the commission, because I told them, no, we need to approve you first before you can... So they're just kind of winging it now, which...
Future, Jean, like, who keeps track of that stuff? Well, usually it's between, you know, the department head and myself. Okay. And then they let me know or, you know, if I got the list, I try to keep it up.
Which gives... Which gives me kind of a, of trying to keep my meeting in order here, but I'm gonna ask this question this way, because I don't know where to put it. I have on my lists that these terms that expire mid-year expire on May thirty-first. I've been questioned that by a couple of these boards, and they said, just, their understanding is they expire June thirtieth.
That's what my board thinks too.
That's what I've got down.
So... I'm, I'm wondering, do I just go ahead and change that date down here? Or do I need to have something more official than just changing the date? Because I don't know where five thirty-one came from originally. It was on some...
That's on the weed board, is the five thirty-one?
Weed board, planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Oh.
Uh, library board. Um, Mercer County Housing. Uh, policy, well, that's no longer, okay, those positions, those I have as five thirty-one.
And I've got them all as end of June.
As the end of June, so I'll just change that date on my sheets then as of June, if there's no...
I think we should be consistent, then we're not...
Then we're like, which one was that one? Where was it?
I don't have a problem with that, I just don't want to make sure that I'm not...
And I'll go through them and see if there's any more. See, the only reason why they put out just at a certain time, everybody, is because sometimes these boards, they just reappoint.
Yep.
And they have in the past, but I mean...
They have in the past, but can they?
Like, is that the right way to be doing it?
Or are we supposed to advertise and are we supposed to like, you know what I mean?
I'm saying, hell, for the people that continue to stay on it, like, but it's a lot. I'll go through everything. I'll let you guys know, we'll just send out for everything that's up for expiration, and I'll go check it to make sure we got it.
Okay, so then all these that I have marked as May thirty-first, I'm gonna change to June thirtieth, and then I will let those boards tell me if that was incorrect. I don't think I'll have any board telling me that I did something I couldn't, so to speak, because they're probably under, with the understanding, it's June thirtieth anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, from the aspect of these boards, I know they're appointed generally by us, but we should make it available for anybody to apply.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't feel that they should get to just reappoint.
That's what I'm saying, like, I mean, if they're the only applicant or they're a good applicant, then, yeah, they can, and, and I think of the library board, there's actually bylaws with the library board where they can only serve two consecutive terms and then they have to take off, so, um, that one requires, you know, new people, if there's, if they've served out, so... And these boards could have certain bylaws, but, um, we should be consistent.
And that one specifically, the documentation I have, it says library board, three-year term, June appointment.
Yeah.
So, is that where the confusion was on as for five thirty-one?
Well, you would appoint in June, knowing that the term ended in June, so that, you know, come, come July one, you'd have, you'd know who was on that board.
Okay, enough on that. Well, I'll make those changes on my, just on my sheets, so...
And I, I think it is accurate that we should send out to them that it should be where it's put in the paper and it's advertised.
But next year, we'll do an annual, just cover everybody.
Yeah, it'd be nice to, first of May, send out, you know, here's a list of vacancies and boards that need them.
Right.
If you don't advertise, then you don't know what you're, maybe somebody's out there that wants to do it.
Wanted to, didn't know it was open, available.
Okay. I think we've discussed that one enough, and that was my weed board. Oh, now we're at ten o'clock. Highway, oh, no, we're at ten fifteen, is that next? Okay.
What about the library?
You want to talk about the library?
Sure.
Okay. The library board does still have one vacancy from Mercer County. Um, I know we advertised that, but we only got one applicant, so if we're gonna make an advertisement again, it'd probably be worth adding that there's still an opening for the library board. As of, uh, yesterday afternoon, I got an email from our library board director. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that, um, uh, City of Riverdale and that building, um, they're looking at options. We're probably gonna have a special meeting, but I wanted to give this board an update of what the possibilities are. The city has offered to give, um, the building to the library board. I, I think, um, we'll have to discuss that both as the board, as the library board, and also as the two commissions, but, um, it's in McLean County, so I think for cleanliness, it probably, if it, if we do accept the building, I think it should be owned by McLean County, so Mercer County doesn't have a building in a different county. Um, one of the other options is looking for a new space, um, and that could be either leasing or, um, possibly building. Um, I think the building in Riverdale, I know it needs a rough, um, it needs some other upgrades, um, but if an entity like one of the counties owned it, it would make it eligible for grants and things like that through Department of Commerce and other entities, um, so some of those, um, fixes could possibly be paid by, you know, other entities, so I don't know if this board has an inclination one way or the other, but I just wanted to, um, update the board on possibilities of what may transpire with the regional library, whether it stays in Riverdale or we choose another location, but we're kind of up in air, so I wanted everybody to be aware what we're, what we're looking at, so I don't know if anybody has any gut reactions or if you want to digest it for a little bit and we discuss it further once we have more information, so...
Discuss it further when we have any more information, when you have more information.
When we have more information?
That's, that's my, would be my, um...
If we kind of, if the board kind of has a recommendation or a direction to go, I think would be the most helpful, but I just wanted to bring it up so nobody was caught off guard when I uh, bring further information to it, so that's kind of my update, and that, like I said, I just got the email, um, yesterday afternoon, so it's fresh.
Can, uh, Jean, can, I was sitting here, can we go back to the Road Department for a second about this bridge?
That email?
Here to go finding, yeah.
Um, okay, what, what's your question?
Well, who's Ken Nelson and who's mercerhd@westriver.com? Like, who gave us this?
What, what, whoa, whoa, whoa. This application, this permit?
No, the email.
The email.
Looks like it was emailed to mercerhd.
Yeah, but who is mercerhd? And who's Ken Nelson? Because the email is to Ken Nelson.
It was a route superintender.
Three, three of them go?
I know, but he's not currently involved with Mercer County.
No.
Am I missing something?
Carmen, who gave us this? Brandon Vies, and I'm sure they're from the North Dakota DOT, the Bridge Inspection. I understand, but... I have a feeling Ken Nelson is what's on their email, what they named their email long time ago and just never changed it, because it's basically a email. But like, how did these get to us today? Rachel emailed it to me and it's...
They got, they got this and I asked to have it sent over so we all see it. The signs are missing. We'll put it back.
I'm just questioning how the communication got here to us.
Yeah, no, I, I asked them to send it over so you would see it.
Some, right, somebody under Ken Nelson is looking at this email, so it's all unquestioning as we're sitting here.
I just didn't want somebody to just slap it, nobody said anything. I want you all to see it, so I, I had Rachel send it to Carmen, Carmen gave us all the copies, so we got it.
But as far as your comment on the two, it's either a setting on our end or, like Carmen said, it's a setting.
It would, no, it's to their end.
Their end, okay.
Like, that's why Rachel got it, it's their county general email, well, they just... Who's county general email, like, you know, like Mercer HD or whatever. Yeah, but it's a West River email, so that is one of our local, that's a local email for here. Yes, and that's what the county uses. So Rachel doesn't use her government email or Elroy uses government email, they use a West River? I'm telling you, the county shop uses a West River for their main email.
I will call and ask him what to deal with. I'll find out.
It just, Ken Nelson doesn't work there anymore. Hasn't for a long time.
Right, I will.
It's important to get those things accurate.
Well, just so the DOT is communicating correctly with correct people.
Right, and, I mean, this is slightly off topic, but I called, um, Linda Slahovek a couple of months ago from the office phone and she said, I'm getting a call from Steve Mamer and he's been...
He's been gone.
All night, so whoever phone she had, had it in there, Steve, so I mean, it could be, could be on that end too, so, it happens.
Yep, just wondering.
I'll follow up on it for you.
Just so they know Ken Nelson, who's been gone for quite some time.
Okay.
Nice man.
Uh, we can do, start with some portfolio updates, Jamie?
Really don't have any.
We'll start on that end.
Yep.
Well, that's my line.
Social services is tomorrow, otherwise.
Then I'll follow Jamie, I have none, Rick?
I just completed the fair and I'm still live. I appreciate all the help that everybody put forth, uh, we didn't have a great turnout this year, with last year was just the opposite, this year was uh, not the best, but uh, we'll, we'll keep going forward, uh. Sheriff's Department, um, I guess Terry can probably help me quick, but we have eight vehicles that got damaged in a storm here the other night.
Yes.
I got a list of them if we need, uh.
For those that don't know, Stanton got a hailstorm Sunday night, pink box sized hail, because it didn't really hit the rest of the county.
Insurance is going to look at, uh, we have the four vehicles that we were going to put out for bids that got damaged, uh, we'll have to turn into insurance, we have. Three, three vehicles plus a transport van, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Used to happen to have a few that.
Four, four out of service and four in service.
Are those all full coverage or?
They're, we have full coverage on those.
Our problem is, is you guys just gave, Rick and I, Commissioner Roman and I, information to settle at the last meeting, and now we have to go relook at that, because they're gonna offer us, of course, less. The company I had that made the top bid so far, we're gonna get them to bid them, was our plan, and see if the insurance, whether they want them fixed, and the county will just get a check back at the general fund. If they don't want them fixed, you know, if the numbers match, I think we're still covered as part of the authority if you have information, Obama and I can get these sold, I want them out of here by. And longer they stay than quest or whatever, I guess.
Right.
Rest of my updates, um, like PNZ, we didn't have a meeting, now we've talked about the stuff that Travis has talked about. That's on the agenda right now, um. And uh. I do have a little bit of work we gotta do now with uh, extension office and Carmen can be helping me with that, so that's where, where I'm at with all what I've got going on.
Liza?
Uh, we tried to have ambulance board meeting last night, but unfortunately we didn't have a quorum, so that didn't work out for us, um, we did get information on. The changes for the Blue Cross for the um, insurance for them, we were just given information on that. Um, as far as airport board, we finally got the lease hanger agreements complete and those that have been going out for those that have leases there to ensure that we have those new hanger agreements in place. Can't remember if I did talk about that we, yeah, I think at the last one I talked about that the fly-in went well. And Dawn will talk about her budget on Monday, I think that's all I have.
Travis?
Um, not much further to update, like I gave you kinda where we're at on the library board, Rick's, like Rick said, no PNZ this month. Nothing new with Lewis and Clark or um, call conversion counties, but um, we do have that um, joint meeting. For all the health, uh, the counties within the health district and that was in August, right, I think she was gonna send that out.
Yeah.
So that will be coming up, um, but otherwise, that's all the updates I have.
Okay, Rick, you had?
Yeah, on the highway department too, uh. Elroy asked this morning, we did a little bit about it, we'd like to use Lakeview Services for a couple more weeks yet on, you know, we're hauling long hauls and got a lot of gravel to move yet, so. Just for a heads up on that, uh, it's in, we do have money, money in the budget to do it, it just, probably a line item will go over, but it'll be, there'll be extra money in the budget to make that fit, but uh. I just wanted everyone aware of what we were doing, so.
Since I got you back on, uh, where are we with the county twenty bridge south of Crossroads?
I believe it's starting this week or they started this.
Okay, and where are we with the airport road?
That one, I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
They did, that paving company did do the little tar pit overlay south of Hazen on twenty seven, they did that last week, that looks very nice. I don't know why they, it was damaged in the flood last spring, yep, but it looks very nice, they were very quick about it.
I know, Elroy gave me a list, a couple of things, and I know I forgot one, but I guess we'll, we'll make it work.
Okay, well, as far, you can get our HR person in here, you open the door and yell at them, we're ready. Or, here, let's take a five-minute recess.
Ten fourteen?
Yeah.
And then, uh, on these, I just, for my opinion on these policies, I would be in favor of the first two against the conflict interest policy. And I'm in favor of the credit card policy because we do equal. Yeah, that's my, and they, all of them affect my office, like I say, that, I think the board should decide personally on the third one. Mission conflict interest, yeah, if they don't like something, they can vote them out of office next time around. Yeah, no, and I, I fully understand you have your own opinion on it, so, whatever you guys decide, but I just, you can like, because I have to.
All right, thanks for that, thank you, sir.
Come on now, this is just my personal, this is my work, because if something happens on my work line and I'm on my phone getting taken away from me. You look very confused.
Yep, they're signed and approved. Oh, we took a recess, you got until, you got until ten eighteen. At ten thirteen, we took a five-minute recess.
So I'm early.
Yep. Evening wise, early, agenda-wise. We'll get Rick a. About a minute. Okay, call meeting back to order, HR update.
Um, there is the policy changes on the agenda, I did include those in your packets and I did email those to you last week as well. Uh, did you want me to read all of them or you just wanna kinda go through each one?
I don't think we have to read them, if everyone's got a copy, Dan, did you get a copy? Okay.
So we'll go through.
Just highlight.
First, which one are we, I think just go by each one individually?
Okay.
Yes, oh yes.
Do we have to take action on them today?
Pardon?
Do we have to take action on each one today?
Well, let's start with the exempt employee pay deductions policy, any issues with that one? What is the gist of it?
This is for the salaried employees of Mercer County, the ones that are not elected, but the ones that are salaried and don't work, don't get paid hourly. It's just clarifying what deductions can be taken, um, when they were required to take vacation, et cetera. So basically, it just says, uh, exempt employees must receive their full salary for any week in which they perform any work. Which without regard to the number of days or hours worked, and that is um, by federal law.
Okay.
And it's, you know, most exempt employees work way more than forty hours a week. Right, it's a new policy, there was no policy such as this previously, yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the Mercer County exempt employee pay deductions policy?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, wait, so, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So one of the, one of the things we talked about exempt employees, um, they're not keeping a. Hourly law, right?
Correct.
What this clarifies when, you know, if, if they're required to do jury duty or. Um, military leave type stuff, it addresses it, and then, um. So how does, how do, how do we account for their vacation, or is it?
If they are gone the entire day, they do not work anything during that day, then they would require to use vacation, a full day of vacation.
Thoughts down here?
Yeah.
In the exemptions?
Yep.
So in other words, I mean, we can start with this, if we see problems on the road, we can always amend and change.
Yes, correct.
Correct.
You can amend it at the next meeting. Any further discussion?
Jean, I think I'm going to recuse myself from this one, just because it's me.
Yep.
You're sitting out, you said?
I'm sitting out, sitting outside lines.
Hearing aids aren't doing well today.
I noticed.
A lot of huh? Okay, any further discussion? Any none, Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Uh, next, Mercer County Mileage?
Yep, mileage reimbursement, this was developed due to, there was always an understanding rule of what can be counted for mileage when you turn it in, so this just clarifies. When employees go travel on business duties for Mercer County, what they can actually claim for mileage. So example, number eight, mileage will be reimbursed for the distance between the employee's point of origin and the location of business function being attended. And then it gives examples so that it's clear to each employee of what they can claim for mileage. So for example, when I go to the highway department in the morning for, like today, I claim from where I started to the highway department, to the highway department, back to the house. I don't get to claim all the way back to Stanton, to them to work.
I'll move to adopt the mileage reimbursement policy.
Do you have a second?
Liza, a second.
Any further discussion?
Um, this is a pretty common, um.
I just, we didn't have some of these in place, like, it was always just an understanding, but not.
I'm gonna ask you a kind of same question, are all, are all of these new policies or any of them existing?
These are all new.
They're all from?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is, is.
Clarification.
Basically, this one gives clarification.
I understand, I should know if maybe you have old policies or outdated.
Oh, I think these are all new, but this mileage reimbursement policy is, it, it, it's kind of more so a clarification so that the practices use the same across the county.
And I was just mentioning that this is pretty common policies that other entities have, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Are you in on this one?
We all claim, we all claim mileage.
Technically, if you're sitting at the tables, you have to vote, but, okay, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed, that policy is adopted, uh, next one is uh, commission conflict of interest in my, okay?
Uh, this was the new one that I kinda condensed of what you, what Jean sent me previously, so, um, it's the policy that up Mercer County, that employee of the county shall not hold any position. Nor serve on any board in which interests or position would conflict with the duties assigned to that individual employee and/or that individual's office. Um, and then it goes on to state, um, who are member of county commissioners who are currently employed by the county. As the effective date of this policy are allowed to complete their current term and additional terms if they were reelected without a break in their service. So it's just kinda condensed what Jean had sent previously.
I have a few comments on, I don't know if the commission has the authority to do this, because it's the electors who decide who get on that board. I think we'll hopefully have some constitutional issues, but there is no clear kind answer. I've seen in other states where this has been tossed out, hasn't been challenged in North Dakota, the best that I can find through research and. Honestly, I haven't sat down and done, I, I haven't done extensive research upon this due to other things that have been going around lately, uh, with cases that I'm working on. But I don't see any constitutional authority from the commission to decide who and who cannot run, other than was already in the statutes.
Well, I've read, I've read some AG opinions also, and of course, there is no AG opinion on an exact commission commissioner. But even a, like a school board member, he, the AG said that a teacher cannot be on the school board. Because they're in direct, you, you, i- i- it's a direct conflict, and this would fa- would follow that also. Because you could end up with three, four, or five commissioners that all work for the county and now they're voting on their own pay raises and salaries and benefit packages, and that's a direct conflict.
But if you look at the other AG opinions dealing with this, there were research back when Jamie was running and then got hired as a county manager, but the jail, it is a law.
Well, I would, I would say I'd, I'd want to accept this and if uh, if it gets kicked up to the AG and he says we can't have it, then we can't have it. But for now, I would be comfortable with it, with this language.
Obviously, this. Is in my scenario, but the last paragraph would, wouldn't affect me, but the employees I have talked to, they felt kinda the same as Todd, is that it's. Kind of your constitutional right to be able to run for a board?
You can run.
Right, I'm not saying, um, but I, I don't know, I kind of agree with Todd, I don't know if I'm gonna run again next year, I can't say that, but according to this, I. The way this policy would come into place, I could run again and keep, there's no guarantee of keeping either job, so, I don't know, I. I just don't wanna, I don't know if. I just don't wanna, I don't know if, I, I don't know that we're, are we making an issue of something that doesn't need to be an issue currently?
Well, currently, no, but we gotta try and head off what could happen, because uh, if I were the sheriff, I would tell all my deputies, run for commission, and we'll get five of you on the commission, because in the opinion I've heard here already from one is there, you can't stop them from running. Well, now you're gonna have five commissioners that belong to the, um, sheriff's department? My gosh, how, how would you even control? I mean, when they vote for a fifty percent pay increase, there's no one who could stop them, and which is by AG opinion, you can't do that. You can't vote on your own benefit package and/or pay raises. So once you get, um, three employees of the county on the commission, you no longer, how could they even vote on a budget?
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Jean. I, I get your side of it. I just-
So, I have no, I have no problem with this language, and kick it up to the AG's office, and if he hands down an opinion that says, nope, you can't have this, then we can't have it.
Why would we not do that before we enact a pro-
If that is requested the commission, I would send this policy up and request an AG's opinion on it.
Before we enact it?
Before we enact. That would make more sense to me. That would, why, why do it and then, you know?
Well, the AG's opinion necessarily is final. The Supreme Court is not bound by AG opinions. However, they do look to those opinions as strong advice.
Right, and then, but I mean, when we're looking for an advice and, and, and a way to go forward, that we're, we're, what better way to start with?
Yeah. And if this were something where we had to have an answer before the first of November this year, that'd be different. We have the time. My recommendation would be exactly what Rick is suggesting.
So is there any interest to take action on this policy?
I would move that we send this policy to, for an AG's opinion.
I would second that.
Okay. See if we can get an AG's opinion on this policy.
Do we need to vote on that?
We'll have to, we're gonna move.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick? Jean, aye. Motion passed. Uh, Mercer County credit card policy.
Just to let you know where the blanks are on that policy. They will be completed. Carmen did give me all that information. So that will all be completed in there, and the application to be a cardholder is also through the states, so that form would also be included with this policy.
I reviewed the policy. I think there's nothing in it that causes me a headache. Uh, one thing I do wanna point out by signing this, now I'm using myself as an example because it won't happen if all of a sudden I use the credit card like a certain like official in another county a few years back, go and buy myself a Mardi suit, get some guests, and upgrade to first class, and suites, and exotic car rentals. The states comes out of my pocket by abusing. Frankly, that's a common sense policy. And it also indicates in there that abuses of that sort can also be charged criminal.
Right, and I would caution all the heads of departments to be very cautious with this, and of course, you're gonna police yourself. And since Todd brought it up, I'll pick on Todd, where Todd has a credit card. He goes to a convention and who cares where, and they have this nice pretty gun, and he decides to use his county credit card with the intent to pay it off out of his own account when he gets home, and he doesn't. So, I've seen those cases like that, and it, it, it's not good. It wasn't good for the individual.
This policy prohibits that.
Well, I under-
That's something that when, when Alice first-
I'm not saying you're going to. I'm just trying to cite examples.
That's the type of abuses when seeing his other people's things, and this policy makes sure that that doesn't happen. And if somebody violates that policy, the card can be used.
Yeah.
Can lead, can lead up to termination too.
I mean, I'm good with it.
One, one thing I think people in, you know, in the audience or on camera, whatever, understand is that the auditor still manages the credit card. These are, the department heads manage their budget, and they're actually managing, along with their budget, they're managing this credit card with that. It's not that we're, you know, we're already trusting them with their budget, so we're trusting them with this credit card. And they do have to provide paperwork to everything that is purchased anyway, so it's not-
Right, and we-
Not a blank check.
And the commission does finalize the bills anyway. I'm just, just letting everyone know, I, I've personally seen the abuse, so. And I do trust our officials, put it that way.
And the purpose still is we're going to convince, to give an example, two months back, the state series convention in Minot. I had them direct bill. If they won't direct bill, then the card can be used.
Yep.
This also does not prohibit the county official from putting it on their own credit cards, writing their own check receipt for reimbursement. This is not getting that. My intention on that credit card is it will be locked in my office and used only from the office. Down expenses and things of this sort, I'm gonna do it the old-fashioned way.
Right, and it's still allowed.
Because I'm stubborn.
Yeah.
I don't like carrying credit cards.
And you have one with all this filled in, Alice? You said?
I don't, but I can, it's just basically fill it in like JP Morgan.
Yeah, and what I did is I just sent this so she can cut and paste it. She might wanna have time, but, and I have a story about that.
Right.
But the state, it isn't just me administering it. We have the state. This is a state credit card, so we've got a couple lines of safety here. So, um, yeah, once she gets this all up and email it out again for everybody, and then they know. We got the numbers to call, you know, everything is put in place. Yes.
And just for clarification, Todd brought up a good point. This doesn't force them to use this county credit card. You can still do it the old-fashioned way.
Yes.
So, any of the department heads who, if, if they're wondering about that, no, you, this, if you don't even want a county credit card, you don't have to get one.
There's some department heads that do not want one. What I'd like to do is those that are interested, if we approve this, we'll prove that. Um, have them contact me, and then let's bring it to the board, and just so you guys are aware, we've got approval.
Yeah, that was gonna be my comment, that each department should request, and then we give approval for that department to have one. Cause if we find that a department doesn't need it, it's probably not worth issuing one. Yeah, or doesn't want it, so.
An email can go out to department heads to put in your request by whatever the next meeting or whatever.
We can get it going.
I'll get that.
But first, I gotta vote that if we want it.
If we, yeah, if we listen to place, sorry.
All right, I'll move to approve the Mercer County credit card policy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Okay, we've discussed that one. Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Where are we at?
Um, okay, so just letting you know that the labor positions at the highway department have been filled as of this morning.
What'd you say?
The labor depart, the labors at the highway department. Those positions are filled. Um, all the road superintendent applications are in your packets. Don't know if you guys wanna look, decide if you wanna set up, uh, interviews, or if you wanna pass. I think there's eight of them.
It's a nice, I'm, I'm very impressed in the fact that we got this many applicants. That's great that we got some choices.
Is it eight, Jamie?
Eight.
So do we wanna interview all of them, or do we?
Do we have to interview all of that?
We do not.
Okay, well, governments always-
We just never know.
Yeah, we have fun rules.
Is it eight applications?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. I don't have a comment at this point.
Do they all meet minimum requirements?
No.
Okay, if there's some that don't meet minimum requirements, I don't think that'd be worth interviewing.
Yep. That would be my suggestion, is if they meet minimum, then we should interview them. If they don't meet minimum, then no, because we have a, a lot of, at least, do we have some that meet minimum?
Three, at least three.
Okay, then I would say that you would interview those first, and if we find that that's not gonna work, then potentially.
But I think we interview because this entity reports to us.
Right, so we would interview those three that would qualify, that would meet that minimum qualification. But if we find that none of them would really fit or work-
Then you could go down-
Then we could look at those again.
Yes.
And or we, and or we could just request not fill it and continue searching.
Correct, correct. Yep.
Yeah, which is better than most times.
Okay, you will let us know which ones meet the qualifications?
Correct.
And then?
When would we be looking at interviewing?
And you say there's approximately three that meet the qualifications?
Yes.
All right.
I would say probably not next week, because we got the budget meeting and also the, the Daco people coming.
Yep, that's Thursday.
But the week after, which is the last week of July.
That's finally a week where I have no doubts on the calendar. I'm gonna add one. That's fine.
Okay, so you said not next week, but the week after?
We've got twenty-first a full day, twenty-fifth, we've got-
So the twenty-second, we're a full day here already?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not here the twenty-third, I'm not here the twenty-fourth.
And the twenty-fifth.
And I'm not the twenty-fifth.
You're not the twenty-fifth either?
No, the only day I could potentially come is the twenty-sixth, next week.
How about the twenty-ninth?
I can come then.
Twenty-ninth, anybody?
I don't have any doubts on that one.
Can you come the twenty-ninth, Jamie? Yep, okay, Jamie can.
Any thoughts?
Yep.
I'd have to find some excuse that it wouldn't work, but it does work for me.
At what time would you like to start the interviews?
So let's, uh, do the interviews on the twenty-ninth, um,
nine, ten, eleven?
Time. Is there a distance issue with any of these?
What?
Could they be here by nine?
I believe, I'm sure if we would, I called and asked, I'm sure that person could be.
Okay, let's set them up for nine, nine-thirty, ten?
I, I think you need to do an hour, nine, ten, eleven.
All right, nine, ten, eleven, and if you have, what, do we have a closing date on applications? We did not, did we?
Oh, no, you did.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, we did?
Yep.
Okay. So then, nine, ten, eleven.
Yep.
On-
On twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Correct.
Gonna add that right now before I forget. If you guys give me a moment. Thank you. Got that on here now. July twenty-ninth. At nine o'clock, starting. And you can set up, uh, you go ahead and set up the times for each individual, okay?
And I will email you the interview questions beforehand.
Yes.
Look them over, and then you could add or delete or change however you feel necessary.
And I don't think it's uh, uh, out of line to let us know which individuals at which time? You can do that, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, yeah.
And I'll like Carmen note too, so she can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll call it a special meeting.
It's the interviews for the road superintendent.
Oh, with their names?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, is that a special meeting then?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, we could put on their decision, and if we don't wanna make a decision that day, we don't have to, but if we have it on the agenda.
At least.
Yes.
At least we can do that.
Yep.
So, the twenty-ninth, uh, road superintendent interviews, starting at nine.
Decision at the end.
Yep, and decision at the end.
We just leave that open, because we don't-
But we have to, we have to have it on there?
Yes.
Cause if we want to make a decision that day, we can, but if we don't put it on there, then we can't make a decision.
Okay.
Yep.
Decision. Yep.
So we're writing it, decision to be made?
No.
Just decision not to make.
Just whatever decision we're gonna choose. If you narrow it down, then we have to do that. If you just say decision, it could be a decision to hold off until we talk further.
Okay. Thank you.
You're painful today.
Got it, we gotta get it-
It's not unlike any other day.
We gotta get it right, and that's why I remind the four of you, so we get it right.
I think we should buy Nancy a gift.
You should. Only because this is being recorded. Okay.
Okay, veteran's service officer. You know, Ron has submitted his retirement, so we need to either look at, you know, advertising to fill this position, what are the wishes that the commission would like for me to do?
I need it's October?
September.
September, okay.
Oh, I thought it was October.
September?
I thought it was October.
Sure, September.
First?
No, I think it's the end of September he's done.
Pardon?
I think at the end of September, he's done.
Okay.
I've heard it both ways. I've had many people, because he announced it at the Legion, I believe, that there's been many individuals that are potentially interested, but there's also many of our local veterans that are traveling to Bismarck or Dickinson or whatever, and they've talked with their people, and they would be potentially interested in coming in a day or two a week to bring those services, to bring our veterans back to the county that are currently traveling to other counties for, for these services, so.
Yeah, I think we could, um, look at our options. I've, um, I think we should advertise for a veteran's service officer uh, along with, we could see if there's some interest in combining with another county, and I don't know if this, the rest of this commission even has that interest or not. I've heard rumor that there's a possibility of a veteran's service officer probably from one or two other counties that would be interested in doing part-time, cause they are part-time in another county, and they would do part-time here. I, I'm open to, I myself am open to both options.
Yeah, I think if they're willing to be here for those services, whether they are providing services in a different county or they're within our county, I think as long as we're providing those services.
I just wanna do whatever is best for our local veterans.
Yes.
Cause it really does, and it's not, it's not anything with Ron, just some came from other locations, so they stayed with that person, that they had that rapport, they had that, so I just, it'd be nice to bring people back here if we can.
Or maybe being our localized veteran services.
So, if it's okay with the rest of the commission, I would say go ahead and advertise for now, and then let's look at our other options. Also.
Do we wanna end date on the advertisement then? Right, like, do we wanna say by?
Open until-
Is it open until filled, or is it?
So I would do.
But then when are we gonna discuss it again so that we can know what direction we're going?
When you do get applicants or something, we could discuss it, right?
Let's-
I don't know, maybe I'm a little kinda wrong.
Well, I just wanna make sure that if somebody wants to turn it in, that they know. Well, I just wanna make sure that if somebody wants to turn it in, that they know what they get it turned in by, so that it would be discussed.
That's the first thing. Can we, can we put it in that advertisement, like Dubai, August seventh, but maybe open until?
Until Phil.
Can that verbiage somehow be in there in case it's not the right fit, then it can?
I just don't want somebody to miss out because they didn't have time to get their application in, that they would have been maybe the best fit for our county.
Yes, and that's what I'm, I don't even know how to word that, or if I would like to have it on the agenda, like, August seventh, August twenty-first, maybe even the September fourth, just have on there our Veteran Service to see where we're at, to see if you get applications to, and for discussion. Because I think, what's the Sentry Code say on a Veteran Service Officer? I think we have to have one.
Yes.
Yes.
Even if it's, even if it's joint.
Even if it's shared, we have to have one.
So I don't know if his, if he said, I, I, I got his application, but I'm not gonna even start to look for it. But what his effective date is, so let's say his effective date, he says is September fifteenth. Do we have to have it filled by the sixteenth, or are we okay until, say, October first or later? Because we wouldn't have a Veteran Service Officer in between that time.
There's, I probably should pull Sentry.
Fancy legal words.
Probably gotta be something about a vacancy, I mean, if somebody just helping quits, you gotta. I think if you would have the option for them to be, you know, like have somebody from a different county come in and help or assist, I think you would be covered.
Be covered, but we have to make that.
Read the Sentry Code just to make sure.
And so let's review that before we make a complete.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. Our state attorney's sitting here, what, what happens with, with that verbiage, I mean, even if we, I understand if we get an agreement with another Veteran Service to fill in temporarily, we're okay, but we have to have that in place.
I just learned that Ron's retiring right here. My reflection is, is that if we have to fill it by the time Ron has, we can reach out to another county, I can't worry. I just wanna double check to see what limits we've got, this much time we have to work on.
Right, I just don't wanna.
I think if we can get it advertised, I think you could put it on August seventh, that's a few, that's three weeks yet, granted the paper deadline, that probably gives us two weeks. So, yeah, what's your deadline in the application? I was gonna do eight, six, so that way it gives me time to prepare those for you guys, so that's seven.
Makes sense.
Yep, and I'll put it on deed and then DACO, the newspapers.
Is there a Veterans specific website?
I wonder if like the, yeah, like the VA site. The VA might have something, I'll check into that too.
Okay.
And then I'll put it on August seventh, maybe have the other business, Veteran Services. Yes.
Yep.
Applications.
I was quickly trying to see if I could find Ron's letter here. No, I'm not. Okay, good enough.
And then did, I did send out the security assessment at first entry, that was completed by Homeland Security at our courthouse. I thought it was a very good review of our courthouse, you know, I know our Sheriff's Department does a wonderful job with our security and stuff, but it's always kinda nice having someone from the outside looking in, because sometimes we don't notice those things. And this was free of charge to us, so this is their report. One thing they are suggesting is like all the outside windows have Mylar film on them, so we can see out, but nobody can see in. And that would be a pretty cheap fix. Another thing they suggested was like having these eyes at the entrance, because we don't always have security up front that would detect if somebody was carrying weapons, like a knife or a gun or something, and it would alert us that that was happening. So, and then also putting up cameras in use throughout the building, because he says sometimes that detours a lot of people from doing any crime or vandalism or anything if they know that there's cameras in use everywhere. So these are just simple fixes that we can do. Some of them are on even HR, like our background checks, he suggested we do background checks randomly, just like drug tests. So, just a few things that we can do to fix that. Jim and I are working on a few of these already and will continue to work on it and will keep you updated if we're making corrections or what we plan to do. Absolutely. Yeah, he was from Homeland Security and the other one was from the state, yeah, so. I think that's all I have.
I appreciate you working on the policies and then working on making sure that we're safe here and like you said, I know the Sheriff's Department does an excellent job, but just having a few extra things or thinking through a few extra things might be very beneficial for our staff here, so appreciate that.
One thing we did notice that, like when there's, say you have a live shooter, a lot of us have places where we can go hide if something would be in the building, two offices do not have that. You're talking the tax director's office and the recorder's office, they have no place to hide if something like that would happen. So that's something we might wanna look at, see what we could come up with, you know, or.
Something better than under the desk.
Yeah. And again, if somebody's shooting, get out your window, I'm sorry, if you can, get out, get away.
Do we, do they have like panic alarms or?
They do, every office has.
Every office does, okay.
Yep. And I think Colin had just checked a bunch of those. Jim and I are coming up with a plan where we're gonna be checking them more frequently.
Okay.
So.
I don't see Shannon making angry upset, but land use could be.
They both have candy at their windows, so I mean, not.
Oh, okay.
Deferring the upset.
Have a candy. And don't be North Dakota, what's going on out there, you know?
There are different active shooter training, one is after, and there went one called Alice Training. I can't remember the acronym, but it was named after a lady who died as an active shooter in public, so. Something we could look into, I don't think it's something we need to act on right now today, but it would be something that we should maybe look into.
I also went to the North Dakota Public Information Officer Training in Bismarck on Monday and Tuesday, very good training. And while I was there, I got my headshot taken by a professional photographer, and I know Mercer County, we do not have professional headshots of our employees, commissioners, et cetera, so I'm going to call her and get a quote to see what it would cost for her to come up to do so. So we look more professional in our website or if we have any, you know, media thing that we need to do, so.
You kinda spooked me there for a second.
Headshot?
We went from on.
Active shooters. It's been an interesting few weeks for me.
What? Oh, okay.
And I suppose we've got local photographers too, we could. We do, yes. But it would be nice to have pictures of all our staff. Nobody wants a new picture, but.
Evidence.
Can we tie that down till after November? You rascal.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Alice. Next on the agenda is the resolution approval to have the Auditor, Treasurer, Recorder positions appointed. And since, again, since I brought that forward, I would make, I, I don't like making motions because your chairman's supposed to be the last to vote, to split any decisions, but I wanna make a motion, be it resolved by the Mercer County Commission to wit, whereas Mercer County Commission wants to redesignate the elective County Offices of Auditor, Treasurer and Recorder as appointed, and whereas North Dakota Sentry Code eleven, ten, two, two, one, provides, the Board of County Commissioners, made by resolution adopted preliminary resolution incorporating a proposed plan for redesignating an elective county office as appointed, subject to the right of referendum. And whereas the job duties are quite extensive for each office and be it further resolved that appointed appointment of each office shall be made by the Mercer County Commission. Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Let me begin the discussion. This preliminary plan puts the ball rolling. If you read further in eleven, ten point two oh two, yes, it's subject by referendum of the electors, but before the, before the motion could move forward to accomplish that, said the Board shall complete, cause the complete text of proposed plan to publish in the official newspaper at least once during two different weeks within the thirty-two period, thirty-two day period immediately following the adoption, must, shall hold public hearings, not just hearing, and community forums or use other suitable means to disseminate information. And it goes on within two years after the adoption of preliminary resolution. So this is something that's going to take time, it's gonna take public hearings. One of the things, if you go further, and, because this has to go through a fairly complex amount of analysis. If you look to eleven dash ten point two dash oh three, it's the analysis required and has the contents and limitations of the plan. One of the suggestions they got under subsection three C of the last statute I just quoted, is that that can be done by going through what's laid out in the Sentry Code in forty dash four one point one, Local Governance Advisory Study is one way to accomplish that. To sum up, this is something that if it's going to happen, there has to be public input. And the number one thing that I'm catching throughout these statutes dealing with it is that the electorate have to be consulted, because the proposal does take away from the electorate the proposals on the table here, three elected positions. Now, I've done some rough checking and I haven't been able to verify, but the last I heard is there's only eight counties out of fifty-three who've done this. Out of those eight, only one is a non-home rule county. The number one impetus behind this in the counties that have done it is not having anybody running for the positions. I know that raises some concerns, but Sentry Code has it, if nobody is elected to the position, then the commission can fill it. That's not the situation we have here in Mercer County.
That might be right in a couple of counties, but Cass, Foster, Grant Forks, Nelson, Pierce, Towner, Walsh and Ward.
Oh, but Ward are home rule, oh, Ward is home rule, which one is it?
And Nelson probably would make sense, yeah.
And that, in a way, is neither here nor there, because we could also decide to be, move forward becoming a home rule charter county. But this, Sentry Code doesn't matter if we're home rule or not.
I'm just telling you what.
Right.
The brief research I've done.
And this doesn't make it effective immediately, we just have to have some public hearings and then after that, we can adopt the resolution, this is to get it moving forward.
And of those counties, all, all three of these positions are appointed, or? Okay, because there's other counties that have like a combined auditor, treasurer, but it's still elected.
Yeah, there's counties that the treasurer is combined with the auditor, there's counties where the clerk of court and the recorder are in one office, I mean, there's.
Right, there's, there's a gamut, but what you said was that there was eight counties that all three of these positions are currently appointed.
Why'd you say three?
Auditor, treasurer.
Oh, yes, that they are, yes.
Yeah.
Like in Grant County, the auditor and treasurer are one, the clerk of court and registrar are one. And the reason that's been that way is because that was all the people that were interested in even doing it. And Grant County being a small county, they're dealing with a lot less, a lot less taxpayer dollars than they're dealing with here in Mercer County.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
I don't have a problem moving forward with it, but I, I don't know which way I would go after public comment. I really wanna, I'm interested to see what.
The community.
The community.
Yeah.
Hears on this, so. And I, I can argue this both directions, I mean, I I'm very appreciative of the people that this is a full-time job and every four years they could essentially lose their job through an election. I think that's gotta be stressful, but also there is some security in that four years that you don't have to worry about it because you're an elected position, so there's pros and cons to this, but hearing what the public interest is, because I just don't wanna take away their right to vote, but if there's no, you know, no overwhelming issues with it, then, you know, I can, I can see how this would be beneficial.
Right, I'm open to that too, and that we find out at public hearings. And we just set up public, but we can't even have public hearings until we start.
Start the process.
Can I clarify too, Todd, this, so Gene moved to adopt the preliminary resolution and the as follows, and then he read the entire thing. Because I wanna put it in my minutes correctly. This is a preliminary.
It's a preliminary.
Yes.
I'm only here for the public.
Yep.
Yeah.
Then, correct.
So is the adopt, is the adoption of a resolution, or is it the preliminary?
Yes.
It's just a preliminary, nothing.
Doesn't put it into.
It's not saying it's for sure gonna happen, or you just wanna hear everybody's input on it.
And then if they adopt it, then I'm gonna put it two-week notice, right, Todd, I'll put it two-week notice, but we need to set a public hearing.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that after we find out if this is approved or not.
Yep. Any further discussion?
Do we have the option to just skip this and put it on the ballot and let the voters decide? Since we're in a electing year? Or we're past that, because we're past the primary.
No.
No, it'd be just in election.
Till September third, you can put a measure on the ballot.
Yep.
All right, but then to do that, you have to get the signatures.
Yep.
Okay, that.
Basically, what we're looking at right now, summer is flying by. I would, I venture to say we're gonna be too tight on time if you wanna just submit the question to the voters at present. It could be put on for the next election.
Right, that's what my thought was.
Yeah.
You know, we have the public hearing, we have the discussion on it.
If people, if.
And then potentially next year, it'd be put on the ballot.
Maybe I'm anticipating a thought that one of we may have. Do you have to wait till this preliminary resolution to hold public hearings on this? There's nothing that prohibits you from saying, hey, we'd like to get the public's input before we move any further than we are right now.
Yeah, that's also what I was.
All this lays out is what you have to do if you pass the preliminary. This could be something that it, it's not.
But it really wouldn't make sense to have public hearings prior to even, because the public will go, well, what do, what do we even have these hearings for if you're not doing anything? So this, this gets the process, it, it's not the end game, it's the beginning of moving forward the process. And even if we, we have the public hearings and we adopt this, the current electors finish out, finish out their term.
Their current terms.
Yep, this doesn't, even if this would be, if this were to be accepted by, whatever, let's just say November first or December first, then the people in those positions, the auditor, treasurer and recorder, they finish out their term. It's not January one that they're done.
This says statutes came from the nineteen ninety-three legislature, and just one thing I'll point out in eleven, ten point two oh three, subsection five, is that it was actually set, if you were holding office August one of nineteen ninety-three, you could continue to run for that, if you kept it, by the election. You could continue to run for that, and if you kept it, you, by the election. You would continue on all the way up to January one of two, two thousand and two. So, um. The legislative intent with language like that indicates that this should be used sparingly. And only with public support. That's the reason they mandate public hearings, not just a hearing. I, I know that some counties have discussed this, and the commissions have had hearings to get input from the citizenry before they even move on a preliminary.
Sergeant of County just did theirs. Okay, any further?
Jean, there's public comment.
Yeah, I have a public comment, or?
Okay, I gave you a couple of minutes.
Senator Stanjo. Point number one is I find it hard to believe that a system that has been in place and worked for over a hundred years is no longer viable in Mercer County. Number two, some of the comments I've heard is that you want to book in your qualified people into these positions. I disagree with that, where there was three thousand people in Mercer County who voted in the twenty-two general election. And supposedly you know more than the three thousand voters. As far as the number of counties appointing all three positions, eighty-five percent of the counties in Mercer County. Eighty-five percent of the counties have democratically elected all three auditor, treasurer, and recorder positions. Of the other positions that were appointed, seventy-five percent of all the counties in North Dakota have democratically elected positions.
I got one, one thing, but you stress that one thing. Part of that you wrote or read was possibly your opinion, that's not, this whole commission's opinion. So, so don't, just because you heard something doesn't mean that exactly, what, what?
And I'm not insinuating all five.
Pardon?
I didn't say all five, I said you.
I get where you're at, I just understand that it's clearly what, what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to add to that, I've been stopped on the street and called, and these are the same types of comments that I've heard. So, obviously, that's not a scientific poll.
And I've heard otherwise, so.
So, uh, this is why the public hearings have to be held.
Right.
It's always a touchy subject if you're taking something away from the electorate.
I just would, I personally feel it should stay with the electorate.
Okay, any other discussion? Any none? Jean, no vote, aye. Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
No.
Travis?
Oh, aye.
Rick?
Oh, aye then.
Okay, motion passed. So, the proposed resolution has passed, now we gotta do a setup, public hearings.
Yeah, so I need to put it in the paper.
Yep.
And I should go like a dividend next week, the next two weeks, okay. One, two, so I would say you could set up your public August seventh.
Yeah, I, I would think we would do August seventh and, and the other one in August.
Right.
But let me, but let me hold the brakes for a second. There's also the local governance advisory study that can be done to accomplish this. And that requires, you have, the committee would be the governing body or electors of the county, city, state, whatever subdivision. Or you would appoint a committee to look at this and advise back to the commission.
And we could, if we, we can.
But let me finish, I don't see where this would relieve the public hearings. This advisory board or committee would have to have public meetings. And I don't know with that when you leave the commission from having public hearings.
I think we need to have the public hearings.
We just, we just need to set up public hearings. And hearings, since it's plural, we could have two or we could have many more. And we will decide on those, and after the public hearings, then we can make our final determination.
Jean, there's another comment.
I really think, my personal opinion is that you should have a anytime meeting, because you've spotted everybody doing the same thing.
I was actually just gonna bring that up, yeah.
Agreed.
Well, in all my thoughts on this, I was going to have evening, public hearings and possibly like in, uh. Not necessarily here in the courthouse, like even at the Hazen City Hall, Beulah City Hall. Zap, Golden Valley, whatever, and probably in all fairness, have one in each, each locale in the county, which would be five. But we'll decide that.
Six, Jean.
Six, sorry, holy cow, I'll catch you, catch you on that one.
We didn't specify which one you forgot.
No. I'm counting them now in my, with my digits. But yes, that's my intent, to have set up more than.
Part of this notice, I think we should include the language of twelve point one, or excuse me, eleven. I deal with twelve point one day in and day out, which is the current code, so that's, that's my.
Which one you want included, eleven?
If it's eleven, ten point two dash oh three subsection one. The proposed plan for combining or separating county elected offices or redesignation of a county office as elected or appointed. Must be based on the analysis of each affected office, which may include an analysis of the existing office organization functions and procedures. Established for providing governmental services, B, the proposed office organization functions and procedures. And how the proposal may improve the effectiveness and efficiency of county government. And its responsiveness and accountability to local citizens.
Okay, so you want that on the ad?
You don't have to put in all that language, you can just put in as per century code, uh, eleven, eleven ten two three.
Okay, because we're as, we're putting in eleven dash ten point two dash oh two, what it provides. But then I'm gonna need a brief of what this, what you just read, can you brief it down a little?
We can take it right out of the statute and put it in the notice.
So what I'm gonna do is get this together, and then I'm gonna email to you, so then you can check. And then I'll get it to the paper, and if we're gonna have this like on the seventh day, I gotta get that done fast, so we can get it.
I'd like to have it done this afternoon, so there's.
Okay.
And we can cut and paste it right out of the century code.
So, so the seventh is just the first initial one, but then we're going to have others in the evenings at these different locations, is that what you were referring to?
Yes.
Do we do the seventh with our already scheduled meeting, but then go to evenings?
On the seventh.
I just want to make sure the community knows.
On the seventh, we're gonna determine our public meeting dates.
Okay, so we're not having a public hearing.
So that's not actually the public hearing, the seventh is what would determine which locations at what time, that we will have the hearings.
Yes.
That makes more sense to me.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Just trying to plan my life.
Yeah.
Because there's no, there's no.
So they don't have to make a, in two weeks have to have a public hearing, Todd?
No.
No, we just have to have the notice out.
Yep, the notice has to be out for the, the next two, and then the public hearings.
Public hearings can be between now and.
I'm gonna put it under other business.
Pardon?
Set public hearings, under other business on the seventh.
We're gonna, that's when we're gonna set the dates for the public hearings.
But that should be in the notice that we send out, that we will be determining public hearings.
That's for future public hearings.
You gotta let these people know the public hearings, Todd. Wait, wasn't that notice part of it is setting the public hearing date when we talked before about this?
I put in it for two weeks, but in that two week notice, we have to have a public hearing, these are the two total.
Right, so.
That's, that was my understanding, that's why I didn't know if we were doing our first public hearing here in Stanton, like on the seventh.
That's my understanding, that August seventh's gonna be the first public hearing, and then more will be scheduled afterwards.
So we have to.
And then we'll have to do those notices as well.
I think we could do one daytime one since we're here already, and then the rest can go, or whatever, could maybe go to evening or something.
And then we'll have to notice each one of them.
Correct.
Right, yes, yes. Eleven AM, that's when you normally have.
Yeah, I think that works.
Jean and Rick, you on board?
Well, I don't recall that we had to have a public hearing within, um, a certain amount of time.
But then what are we, what are we putting the notice out for?
Right, that the notice wouldn't be put out till after the meeting on the seventh, when we do decide the public hearings, right?
That we had to publish the resolution, and then we set up the public hearing dates. But we don't have to have the public hearing dates within two weeks.
Yeah, there, there's no requirement that we have to have the first public hearings in two weeks.
No, you just gotta.
Just, I will check in the language because.
Okay, so what am I gonna put this notice out for then?
Well, we have to.
You have to.
We have to put the notice out that the board has adopted this preliminary resolution. That has to be in the paper at least two times. This is board shall call the complete text of proposed plan to be published in the official newspaper in the county at least once during two different weeks. Within the thirty day period immediately following the adoption of the preliminary, uh, preliminary resolution.
Right, this just has to be in there, the. And it says, within two years after the adoption of the preliminary resolution, the board of county commissioners may by final resolution approve the plan. So this just has to be published within, twice within the next, whatever it said, thirty days, and then we got like two years.
And so now we're back to just setting up our times?
Yes, we set up our times. There will be no public hearing on the seventh.
Okay.
But what I'm getting at is in the notice, multiple public hearings will be advertised.
Yes, the public hearings will be advertised once we determine the dates of the public hearings.
Correct.
But first off, we gotta determine where we're gonna have the public hearings, I wanna make some phone calls and find out what's available. Cause I prefer to have them in the evenings and in locations other than just here at the courthouse. That's my preference.
No, I think that's the most appropriate way to do this.
If you force say, nope, we're gonna have them here at the courthouse at two o'clock on Wednesday afternoon or something, that's the way it'll be.
No, I think we need to ma- make it as most accessible to as many community members as we possibly can.
Right, so.
So that we can get the most.
So I would ask the rest of my commissioners if you have any ideas or suggestions to bring them to the set, August seventh meeting. I'm also gonna do my best to have sent something for public meetings. Okay, anything else, any other questions on that? All right, uh, budget, department meeting schedule.
Okay, so look at the schedule, I set, I got some questions, now here's what I've got. And, um, what you're giving is a copy of what I received from the department heads in touch, and that's what you requested. Plus, I gave you a salary budget, um, so that you guys can look at what everybody's making right now, and you got the dollar fifty across the board. And then in there, I've also got where certain department heads did request those bump ups, so that's separated, so that you guys can see that. Now, the thing is, Monday, um, we're working on the utilities. I'm, I'm working on those to get all that done, so the blue book, which brings it all together, because everything I'm looking at in here, I'm gonna tie into the blue book. And that kinda, you know, adds it all up for me.
We don't even.
Right now, you guys look at the budgets, get your questions together, and this will be your time with the department heads to go through everything. And then when you're done, what I wanna do is make sure I don't miss anybody's changes or whatever you decide, so I can make sure that, you know, what. Because after that meeting, you've got a good preliminary budget, and that's gonna, you know what I mean, so that we're not.
Right, and for now.
Thank you for giving us this, and thank you for giving the handwritten, or however the departments. Okay, because also your blue book is a lot of work for you guys. Okay, so then, let's see, okay, so like with Jamie's, okay, so like, there's a few things that certain commissioners let me know, actually just Jamie had, um, something with the. It was about the landfills wages, okay, so that, I want you to just look at what we have, but I am putting that into the blue book, so we can meet, and that's where. And I didn't know how that could look. Right, and I want you to see, then you'll see the amount, maybe a separate amount, and then you guys can see where you wanna fit it. Um, let's see, I have the, I wanna look at that agenda I gave you guys.
Well, that would be my question, does anybody have any ideas or suggestions or wanna? Basically, wanna change anything on this agenda for Monday?
Okay, here's the thing, um, everybody that's in there has approved where they're at. The only one that said they don't need to be on there because they talked to Eugene was Brad, the weed board. So that's an open slot there. And then do we need to add the water board on here if they get a bunch of them? Actually, we, we agreed that this would just be our department heads now, if you guys wanna meet with the boards. No, I just. Okay, because that's where this is just. Didn't know if we need to have the others on. Our department. Okay, so that's open, my question to you was, I did put in like half hour lunch break there, I don't know if you guys want that or not. And I did put in about, this is where the full board, I wanna discuss those additional items and. And where they fit in in the blue book, I wanna discuss with you guys, um, with the blue book, and then. I've got my audit there, but that discussion was, okay. Here's the blue book, and the amounts and stuff, things like that.
Okay, under other budgets.
Yeah, and now, um, veteran services, Ron thought, you know, his budget was so simple, he didn't need to meet with you guys. And the superintendent in the schools, he also said that, you know, pretty much it's the same, both of those are the same.
Okay.
Good question, too. Gotta add this stuff in with Rachel already, but it isn't on there, now if we, uh, and, and with Terry too, but we can, this can be added and changed as we.
Right, this is our initial, because I did ask Rachel if there were any bump ups, and Terry come and talked, and said, what he hounded in is, they're starting, is he on it?
This is.
I mean, but this was probably more recent than when we had talked.
This is information basically for today, for Monday's meeting. And all these numbers can be changed come Monday and or even after Monday up until we approve a final budget. But Carmen's given us, so we get, once again.
Just trying to get the information so that you guys can make your decisions.
There's no decisions being made.
And I would say, if you have more bump up things, you can easily put them in here so you guys can see.
What it looks like, correct? I'm not saying, yeah, we, no, it's.
If, yeah.
There'll be no action taken on any of this today.
No.
This is just for.
I've got very good information.
Okay.
But the schedule, I'm just wondering, do you wanna have one on lunch break, I mean. Is that okay to you, I don't know, you guys tell me, how do you wanna do it?
I'm okay with a half hour lunch break.
Yeah, I mean, I think it wouldn't hurt. Just to take a break, but, but nobody's providing food, so unless you want them to come in to, or that's your decision as well. Just to get a break, but nobody's providing food, so unless you want them coming to, or not, it's your decision as a portion.
I think we're all adults and can find some lunch.
Jean, now you're picking on me.
Do I need to call Nancy, pack your lunch? Gosh.
Crackers it is.
I could probably find some goldfish and fresh ass in my vehicle.
I think you were talking, you were talking with Nancy before this, apparently.
You never know.
Alright, and anyone have, I guess, anyone have any changes they would like to see on the agenda for Monday?
I don't think so.
That's the only thing on the table right now.
I added the P and Z, with Travis's request.
Travis? Is the water board, a regular water board, you mean, um, for Monday?
No, the regular one is now the, was it the fourth Monday?
And it's.
Yeah, that is the fourth Monday, right?
Are we doing that P and Z thing on Monday?
And that would've been added to the, un- under other, and I can keep all budgets on the other. Fourth Monday, other two.
Oh, you're talking, this is the, well, we can have it on there, but that's, that's gonna be pretty soon, so I don't know if we'll be able to make a decision on Monday, but we can leave it there, I, I mean, I'm okay with it. We don't have to make a decision.
Right.
At three o'clock on Monday, but it's on the agenda, I'm okay with it there.
And then you guys will remove this agenda once the.
Right, I'm, I'm ready to ask for a motion to approve it.
Well, I mean, we can't add to it that day, but we can always subtract from it. Alright?
Yes. Yes, making me think too much, because we're gonna have a, a special meeting on Monday, but we have to have an agenda to have the special meeting. Yeah, you, you don't wanna approve agenda, tell them.
Does it matter, like, does it matter that we have it labeled special budget meeting, do we need to remove the budget?
What I'm gonna do is remove the budget, since we discussed this, you guys are okay, so it's gonna be a, just a special meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll do that, and then I'm taking off under there, others.
Or do we call a second special meeting after and put the P and Z junk on that, so it's separate?
We have to have a reason to have a special meeting.
He's requesting it. For that P and Z's, uh, for the campground.
Right, but what about, uh, going through these, uh, budget items?
What are you saying?
You wanna have a special meeting after the budget, so then I could.
I just don't know if it would make it easier, like, to keep it separated versus, like, whatever's discussed on that campground tied into all the budget stuff.
Okay, what's Dan gonna put in the paper for the meeting on Monday?
Obviously, yeah, the discussion is, are you gonna have, Jamie's saying you're gonna have two special meetings, one on the budget and one on the P and Z thing, or are you gonna have one special meeting that incorporates all of it, and if so, how can you word that?
Correct.
I feel for cleanliness wise, it would be better to have two.
And I'm okay with that, but I'm just saying, we gotta, you can't, we can't just say we're having a special meeting, on what? So we either gotta have a special bu- a meeting on the budget, and a special meeting on the campground.
I think it should be separated for minutes purposes for, because they are not related.
So we're gonna have a, a special meeting, budget meeting, Monday morning at nine o'clock, and then following that, we're gonna have a special meeting on, it should be listed with whatever your.
The zoning case.
Zoning case numbers, right, that's what I'm trying to come up with, zoning case.
Twenty-four dash oh five dash oh one.
Yeah, to follow.
Following this meeting, yes.
See, you're not locked with the time.
Sure, I'm locked with the time.
Okay. Now, back to my regimen, do we need a motion to have a special meeting on Monday?
No.
I think the chair just would just do that.
Alice had something.
Alice has got something before you, Andrew.
Alright, holy moly.
Do you guys want me here for the public hearing, so if there's any wage concerns or anything that I can?
Are you gonna be available Monday?
I will be available Monday.
You're, you're on the.
I know, but I was thinking for all the other departments, if there's any wage concerns there.
I think if you'll be around in the building, we could at least call.
We can pull you in if we need to.
Sounds good, thank you.
I don't think you have to be a participant in the meeting, but be available.
Please.
Alright, so be it. Anything else, hearing none, meeting adjourned. Good golly, I beat that one to death. What's that, Dan?
He's just.
Water board and school board in addition to.
Well, you got, you're gonna be busy, you can tell your boss.
Yes.
Would you be able, I even do this at any point, um, cause I'm gonna, I'll be in town tomorrow, so I can stop by.
I was just, I was thinking about, I'll just email.